...everyone has extension reports.
Yes, sir, it has been handed out.
I have five public hearings, courthouse and at one, two, three, updated, some into question team, don't have anything in that. Publics are four. Opinion will be item six, the child abuse prevention month proclamation, April two thousand thirteen. Child abuse prevention month proclamation, April two thousand thirteen, whereas every child is a precious gift full of negative or belated consciousness and deserves to be reared in a positive safe environment free from the threat, influence, or harmful effects of child abuse. And whereas sixty thousand children are confirmed abused each year in Texas, abuse and neglect can cause traumatic psychological, emotional, and physical damage to children of all ages, and the prevention of child abuse is important to their healthy development and whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families, child abuse prevention is a community responsibility, and bad solutions depend on involvement among all people. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, communities of faith, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas the color blue has been chosen as the international symbol for child abuse advocacy represented through the United bodies of thousands of children abused every day. Whereas the Wilson County Children's Services Board is facilitating the promotion of child abuse prevention month in our county by announcing April tenth, two thousand thirteen, at Gold Blue Day. Therefore, with the commission's force, Wilson County to hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand thirteen to be child abuse prevention month and encourage all citizens to wear and display blue ribbons in honor of children and to promote the prevention of child abuse and neglect. In witness thereof, we have fixed our signatures to seal on the eighth day of April two thousand thirteen. Commissioner White, make comment on that.
Aye.
Marvin.
Aha.
I'm just letting everyone know, I gave everyone a calendar, and that's what the top protective services investigators, when they meet with the foster parents or the custodian parent, they usually give them a calendar, and there's some information, you know, it's got different things for child abuse, so it's pretty interesting, so I gave everyone one of these calendars so that they could see that.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Item seven, Jennifer Fernandez, Lulu's family family, final shelter proclamation recognized April as sexual abuse awareness and prevention. The resolution of the Wilson County Commission for in support of the Wilson Area Housing Foundation.
I have, she had a question. She had your, well, I can change your son, but Judge, is this the one he chose, son?
No, that's the.
Oh, the other, okay, cool, okay, sorry. I'll make sure I don't lose myself.
Whereas every two minutes, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted in the U.S. And in Texas, one out of five women and one in twenty women are victims of sexual assault. Whereas according to the study conducted by Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas and Austin, Texas School of Schoolwork, approximately one point nine million Texans have been sexually victimized. Most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, and only twenty percent of rapes are ever reported to the community. Whereas it is appropriate to salute the more than twenty million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. Whereas nationally, community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness from sexual assault. Whereas police, forensic workers, prosecutors should be recognized and mentored for their hard work in an innovative strategy to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that result in prosecution and incarceration of the offenders. Whereas sexual violence is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round, and in order to foster a healthy community, all citizens must report, must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas national and community organizations, businesses, and private sector and the media are urged through national sexual assault awareness of sexual violence and strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault. Now therefore, be the undersigned, we do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Wilson County, and all citizens should observe this month by supporting the goals and ideals of victims of those working toward awareness and prevention, participating in community action. Commissioner Maris, permission to file on favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jennifer. For those of you in courtroom, Ms. Jennifer used to work for the Sheriff's Department here, and she had a great job, she worked in the, with the victims in the county attorney's office. She's now working with the abused battered women's shelter. We really appreciate the work that she does. Item eight, Nikki Stor, Wilson County Library, the library requests permission to use the court. House parking lot and grounds are a summer reading program, Read and Feed, June twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Motion. Mr. Gonnis, Commissioner Maris, on favor.
Aye.
I like that.
I didn't see that, you want to like it down now?
The thing I would just tell you is that the whole premise of this is part of the summer reading program. So one day that, we're inviting food trucks from Wilson County and San Antonio to just start lining up on Third and, Third and C Street, and it's Read and Feed, so the food trucks would feed the people that come, the library's gonna set up walking paths that you, as you walk the path, you read a picture book, and my staff is trying to talk me into spray painting along for a Twister game. So, I'm not quite sure how I could do that, but they think that would be fun to get everybody out there to play Twister and bowling.
I, I thought I saw on news the other day where the President released the deal fighting obesity, and y'all gonna put, start feeding people on courthouse.
It's okay, Judge, it's only those that can read.
All right, thank you. Item nine, Mikey Bowman and Jerry Cutcher, Florida Chamber of Commerce, use courthouse grounds and parking area for market day on June twenty-seventh, not, May twen- May eighteenth.
May eighteenth.
June thirteenth, the request used would be from seven AM to three PM. Commissioner Gonnis, permission to file on favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any announcement or anything you want to make on that?
No, it's not gonna have the cars with it this year, uh, that's gonna be separate, that's actually this weekend, when the, the crews along the corridor, or whatever, the old cars come around, uh, that's gonna be this weekend, and, uh, the market day is actually gonna be in, a later date than May this year, so, we appreciate it.
Item ten, Lou, Lou Rosenberg, Rosenberg and Roder, consider and take action on resolutions in support of the Wilson County, Wilson Area Housing Foundation Cowboy Breakfast, Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand thirteen.
Oh, we have a resolution here, and I think they even have a representative here also.
You wish me to read?
Judge.
So, do you wish me to read it, or do you wish to read? I, I wish very much you'd read it.
All right, uh, resolution for the Wilson County Commission's Court in support of the Wilson Area Housing Foundation's eleventh Cowboy Breakfast, Saturday, April thirtieth, April twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at the Sacred Heart Parish Grounds, seven thirty to ten thirty M. Whereas, the Wilson Area Housing Foundation was organized to provide housing improvements for families referred from the school district's social offices for the purpose of improving the residential environment of students and attendance at the schools within the county. Whereas, the eleventh annual Cowboy Breakfast will provide financial support for the foundation through its ticket sales and live and silent auctions. Whereas, an energy industry sponsor is sought to reinvest in housing for the safety and stability of the community to repair or replace substandard residents for school age and senior residents, and, whereas breakfast plates will be on sale for eight dollars along with table sponsorships and premier sponsorships to support the activities of the foundation and IRS five oh one C three tax exempt organization. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wilson County Commissioners Court does hereby support the social services office activities relating to families in need of residential assistance, and hereby urges the community and community businesses to support the eleventh annual R and R Cowboy Breakfast, which this year will be located at Sacred Heart Parish Grounds, and urges support for said community event. For ticket sponsors, sponsorships, donation, auction items, and more information concerning the event, contact Richard Stapleton at eight three oh two one six four five six one, or Brenda Colick, eight three oh two one six four zero seven five. Thank you.
I'd like to add, Mr. Ball is an expert on cooking pancakes, and I think he ought to be there to cook the pancake.
Uh-huh. Well, I have a nice, you know, some pancakes, cook the nice and best food.
No one came back for a second?
Next one, can you put your name down?
If you don't want seconds.
Okay. Item eleven, discuss and take action on estimate from Whartlet Tree Experts for trees on the courthouse square. Can you, everybody get a copy of that?
Yes, sir.
Tell me all, I do like that.
I, I think we ought to tell you, or wait till you prove it when we do it to courthouse, be that at that time. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Well, we just.
Thank you.
Item twelve, power five, commission three two, accept bid for disaster relief on ground seven one two, one five seven for material and hauling for precinct number two. They're separate, aren't they?
Yes, sir. The one for hauling, for the material for the county roads, good. The price I got for material is Martin Marietta at four dollars a ton, again, material seven dollars, Simpson is seven dollars, and Smith is seven dollars. Depending on location, Martin Marietta will be the one, and Simpson will be the second, depending on location.
Second, Mr. Gonnis, on favor.
Okay.
Item B, accept bid for disaster relief for the drainage pipe for the bridge work.
I've got, uh, three bids, Seabridge Culver at eighteen thousand eight twenty-two, PMI at eighteen thousand nine seventy-two, bridge is corrugated, twenty-one thousand six hundred. I recommend using Seabridge at eighteen thousand eight twenty-two. And accept bid for disaster relief for materials to put around the pipe as a bridge is Martin Marietta at four dollars a ton, Jen's at nine twenty-five, Brontek at four twenty-five. I recommend using Martin Marietta at four dollars a ton.
Motion, commission, final second, Commissioner Gonnis, on favor.
Aye.
And accept bid for disaster relief for materials to put around the pipe as a bridge is Martin Marietta at four dollars a ton, Jen's at nine twenty-five, Brontek at four twenty-five. I recommend using Martin Marietta at four dollars a ton.
Motion, commission, final second, Commissioner Gonnis, on favor.
Aye.
Yeah, item thirteen, Wayne Byers, present audit. How are you this morning?
Where do I sit?
Did you see where you went, right there?
Just one of those electrified, dude. Good morning, everybody. I was wondering where the sheriff was gonna be sitting, who's playing? I believe everyone has a copy of the audit report, and there's an insert management report, if I could, may I ask you to please turn to pages one and two of the report. I want to say also that I came over here, I think it was last Friday, and had an interview with the judge and the county auditor, so we have all two of this already. Now, page one and two is our opinion letter, and this is an unqualified opinion, there's basically four types of opinions that can be given, uh, this is, um, the highest form of opinion that can be given, it's a qualified opinion. Um, it means simply that, um, these financial statements are presented in accordance with accepted accounting principles, um, that nothing came to our attention during our audit that would cause us to qualify in any manner, and that we received or given everything that we had asked to examine during our audit. And that second paragraph on page one, that first sentence, it says, uh, we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards, generally accepted in the United States of America. What that means is we are given rules and procedures, we have to follow them on the audit. Um, you may have noticed when we come over to do our similar testing, we ask you questions, and you fill out forms of things of that nature, and that's all part of those procedures, and we're saying here that we did follow required procedures. And that third paragraph on page one says, in our opinion, the financial statements present clearly no material respect. The financial position of Wilson County, Texas, has a September thirty, two thousand twelve, and for the year that ended, so it's a good, clean, unqualified opinion. I don't believe I've ever presented a lot of, too often, where the county, someone should actually sit at the table and has vast experience in presenting county audits.
Uh, we're doing county audits.
Hope I do well. Um, next, let's turn over pages seventeen and eighteen, and look at the general fund. But you do know the variance.
I'll give you a ray, man.
On pages seventeen and eighteen is the general fund, and kind of a great idea when it transpired last year. And on top of page seventeen are the revenues, and, uh, you notice there's four columns. The third column are your actual revenues, that's what you actually brought in or received last year, part of revenue, that third, second column is your budget, your budgeted amounts. And that last column is your, is your, um, your budget variance, and simply put, if that number has brackets around it, that means unfavorable, if it doesn't have brackets, it means favorable variance. So, for instance, your total revenue budget is nine point three million dollars, you brought in ten point one four eight million, so you exceeded your budget by seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, the main, the main one, I guess, was property taxes, you exceeded your budget by seven hundred ninety thousand dollars there. And then below the, those revenues are your expenditures, again, the same thing, your second column is your budget, third column is your actual expenditures, and the third column is your budget variance. And, uh, it's broken down by your different departments in the country, or within the general fund that is. I might note that, um, if you look in the very, very bottom of seventeen, sheriff, the sheriff came under budget by five thousand dollars last year, and I believe the CJ's, CJ building was under budget by a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, so. Using those, if anything's gonna be over budget, usually those items are covered down on the line. On page eighteen, um, on your total expenditures at the top, your total budget was nine point three million dollars, you actually, you actually brought in, or spent nine point one five nine million, so you're under budget by two hundred thirteen thousand dollars. The interesting thing to me, and I know that probably, uh, you probably don't know, have not known this, have been done in any other way, but there are counties out there that actually budget deficits, and you can budget deficits if you have enough surplus, beginning surplus to cover the deficit. But you budgeted your balance budget, and you actually came out, um, where it says excess of revenues over expenditures, you came out nine hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars to the difference between your budget. That's what your revenue expenditures. That second, that third column, way at the very bottom, which is fund balances ending, you had ending equity of three million four and forty-six thousand dollars, and if you look up, uh, what, six or seven lines, which says total expenditures, that is, uh, more than thirty-three percent, it says about forty percent, maybe forty-two, forty-three percent, represents forty-two, forty-two percent of your total expenditures last year, which means simply that you have about a four or five month reserves in your ending equity in general fund. Then on page nineteen, page one, page two are the, the Rowan Bridge budgets, you can look at your respective budgets, see how you're coming out, and I think all the Rowan Bridge funds came on good, where the, uh, you actually increased your ending reserves. On page nineteen is precinct one, your ending reserve is four hundred thirty-one thousand dollars, which is about twenty percent of your expenditures last year. On page twenty is precinct two, your ending reserve is three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, which represented, um, above forty percent of your expenditures last year. On page twenty-one is precinct three, your ending reserve is four hundred nine thousand dollars, which is about twenty-five percent of your expenditures last, last year, which is about, that's kind of the threshold, twenty-five percent. On precinct four, on page twenty-two, your ending reserve is four hundred seventy thousand dollars, which was a little bit under half of your expenditures last year, so it's about six hundred reserves to do. Moving on, a couple other things, if you would, just turn over to page number fifty and fifty-one, I'm not gonna spend any time on here unless, um, county auditor has something to say about the current affairs. These are the rest of the funds of the county, and, um, if you just start at the very, very bottom, starting at page fifty, at the very bottom, on the left hand, so you go from left to right, you can kind of see what each fund has in it at the end of the year. There's really nothing to me that, that jumps off. Perhaps the library fund, if you look in the second column from the very right on page fifty, it has a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in it at the end of the year. Okay, and one other thing I'll show you, for the management partner, is on page number thirty-nine. I think one of the interesting things about Wilson County, in addition to having good reserves, good ending reserves, is you have literal no debt, and you were able to pay for this building in cash. Uh, this is your debt that you have for last year, your beginning debt was one point two million dollars, that put us in capital leases, you set up a jail bond, which I think I need to pay it off in a couple years. Um, you had some, you had some capital leases last year. That third column are your debt reductions to five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Your ending debt was one point two million, two point, one point two three five million dollars, which, and the county this side is a little, little bit on, so. So you have good reserves, it's a period of debt.
And we did pay off that jail bond.
Oh, you already paid it off.
I think we did. It's not yet, we're planning on it.
We're planning on it this month or next month.
Say a little interest.
Yeah.
Insert the management letter, you insert the, you know, both of that. Payroll, we noted that precinct two, precinct four, health and public safety, and EMA, are not using the new timesheets, we recommend all county's employees be required to use the same timesheets. Are they doing that now? Finding, and number two, we noted that precinct two, precinct four, health and public safety, and EMA are not, are not listing actual time projects on our respective timesheets. Okay, use the timesheet, not the new timesheet, we recommend that you use time in, time out. That's a new question, new thing we have to ask for. Administrative notes, county does not have recurring or public word timesheet.
Questions, county? Motion? Commissioner Gonnis, Maris, on favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Byers. And then thirteen.
A, and item B is pay out the bill. Motion, motion now for lack of a motion. Motion, Chris, or five seconds. We thank you, appreciate you. Item fourteen, uh, Jan Hoack, N C her, all of you know that her daughter's in the hospital, and, uh, the report is, everything's going good, it's candy, and, uh, transplant, and, so Ed was gonna fill in for her today.
Well, I brought help. It's kind of a big following. Yeah, this is Theresa, and I'm not gonna touch her last name always, I said, Brooke, yeah. Uh, she is due to her office, she's the, our, she's the one you see when you walk in front of her. I brought her up for all the comments we got last time, I, the angle, got the movie and all those others, about me.
Uh, the first one is the pipeline right there.
Yeah, pipeline one, can we take one and two together, that thing?
It's, it's the same location, it's two different pipelines.
Okay.
You go with them together or separate? The cloud meeting together, so I'm, I'll make a motion, either the aquagas, pipeline.
Okay, motion by Commissioner File, second, Mr. White, on favor.
Uh, B is there for information on water line?
Okay. Item B, for information only, is one is Hunt Oil, County Road two oh six, Chesapeake and one H, County Road two oh six near ten second five forty-one, and number two is Hunt Oil, County Road two fifty-two, Skoski, D one and H, and the Skoski V, one H frac line, and, uh, that's for information only.
That's to A, was there something that we needed to sum?
The two parts.
Okay, let it go, let it sum.
Second two should be a question.
Right, right, but the first.
Well, you don't want to run. I think they do, right?
Item C, utility lines, number one, uh, all of these in precinct three. We think one is Judge, uh, three oh six, we're not sure. We think one is Judge, uh, three oh six, we're not sure. That's mine.
That's good, that's three oh six.
This is three oh six.
Let's have to see where it is. So, Commissioner White. Commissioner White, I did, yeah, I just wish. And I haven't seen that one either. You're good with it? Yes.
Three, four, two is in precinct three, next.
Yes, sir.
We'll go ahead and take item one, permit. Four sixty-three, she's on the Greenwater, five, County Road three forty-two, road board discussed taking that. Motion, Commissioner Morale, second, Commissioner Paul, all favor.
You, you reviewed your two yet? I reviewed the first one, sir. I'm looking at the second.
Item two and three, motion, Commissioner White, second, Commissioner Morale, all favor. Item D, nonstandard flat variances, before we get these in, any pictures of one, but all of them are recommended by the.
One through six were all given favorable approval and sent to Commissioner Ford.
Okay, let me just read them all, and if anybody wants to pull anything, we'll pull it, but otherwise, we'll take them all six together. Number one, one oh five, Ranch three.
Ranch.
Ranch, Ranch three. Uh, GNS Investments, discuss and take action. Item two, thirty-eight, fifty-three, County Road three nineteen, Chris, discuss take action. Item three, six thousand five, State Highway one twenty-three South, Willian, Pacific, discuss take action. Item four, six one five, County Road three thirty-eight, Russell Stories, discuss and take action. Um, five is E three twenty, Highway eighty-seven, Bradford Palmer, discuss and take action. Item six, eighty-one fifty-four, US Highway one eighty-one South, Tundra, Plom, Slamlet, discuss and take action. Motion on all six, Commissioner Morale, Commissioner Paul, all favor.
All right. Can I just make a note, and William Leslie, uh, he can just sign some copy, which could be a fourth in there, with our county, we don't have a lot of that in the county.
Item E. Item E would be, uh, RV park application. Item one, and that would be MPM Equipment LLC, review application, class, infrastructure development plan, IGP, discuss and take action.
This is an RV park that is proposed of nineteen, uh, or marked in nineteen twenty-two, which is a false precinct. It is not a R V, sorry, a real park. This is for their employees at this facility, as of right now. And they did meet, uh, the, the requirements and have been given a favorable review, yes. I'll give it ten on E, something like that.
Okay, Commissioner Paul, second, Commissioner Gammis, all favor.
All right.
Item L, Woodland Southern Eagle, reviewing approved flat, item one.
Double D in beautiful precinct four. Thought it was saying Wood Valley. It's not far from it, it's in that general area. There's a big sign on seven seventy-five, says the Oaks, coming through the Oaks, well, it's really the Woodlands, they changed the name.
That motion?
Yes, sir.
And second, Commissioner Paul, all favor. And item two, reviewing acceptance of a letter of credit for eight hundred sixty-eight thousand twenty-nine dollars. Motion, Commissioner White, second, Commissioner Morale, all favor. Item G, Edwin Baker Fire Department, discuss and take action on adoption of fire.
We need to sign that. Yeah, 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 the two. Yeah, on the letter of credit, there was some language that they were going to say, and we might need to look at, uh, judge, uh, that item two, is that something?
Leanne had phoned me out that, that there was language in the letter of credit that they were supposed to, to probably correct. Um, that. Yeah, we just need to make sure with that language. It would, it would actually have given a two-week separation from the time that the, the.
And the motion on that was Commissioner White, and who, second, Commissioner Morale. Would you amend your motion to pending review of the county attorney and?
If, if what they were doing is ever going to change the date before we left it.
And what they make the county attorney review is fine, without coming back to the.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that.
Yeah, the, the letter of credit.
Oh, that essentially, okay. If that sentence was struck and just melted, then that's what we had, and that's what we had, and I would talk to them. Because there's a two-week difference between the day that we.
Probably wouldn't make a difference, but.
Well, we'll change it from the earlier to the later, we fix it.
All right, we just signed this one? This one, yeah. We've had some rain, expecting more rain. I know, I pulled up what the KBDI is, and we're getting close to where a KBDI will actually mean something to us now. Uh, and, and pretty much eastern half of the county is by that, the drier half, and, uh, it, but the, the, the true wet part of the county is probably about a twenty-five percent of the western side. The rest is, you know, still below five hundred, which to me is relatively the same. Uh, we haven't had any problems, at least I haven't been in, informed of any major problems with burning, other than people burning at night, which is, it doesn't matter if it's a burn ban or not. Uh, I don't know what y'all, I know Albert's precinct had a lot of rain. Uh, we are expecting more wind, Steve, but, uh, I don't really see a need to, to reinstate the burn ban at this time, unless y'all have some, want to do precinct areas, or we, we can, we don't have to do the entire county. We can take either precincts out, or areas of precincts out.
Motion to lift, please, does the burn ban lifted? Gammis, Commissioner Morale, all favor.
Uh, thank you.
Item fifteen minutes. Everybody's having a finger to do the. Here, item sixteen, financial report. Anything?
They're all so gorgeous. We have nine million dollars in tax.
Commissioner Gammis, Commissioner Morale, all favor.
There were three different places, I'll mark two of them, and then the very last page, please.
And, uh, seventeen is payable for net payment.
Uh, Charles Kidd, he passed away on three twenty-five, two thousand and thirteen, from Department one sixty, from Rowan Bridge, uh, he's a Rowan Bridge hand, road hand. Number three, road hand. Lynette Rung resigned three twenty-seven, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, as a dispatcher. Uh, Josie, Josie, Jose Espinanza, uh, was hired three twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, two thousand dollars a month as a correction officer. Ambrosia Hernandez, uh, resigned four five, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, as a dispatcher. And Stephanie Medina was hired four eight, two thousand and thirteen, Department four twenty, two thousand dollars a month as a dispatcher. You have any others, Judge Donner?
Question from the world. Motion, Commissioner Morale, Commissioner Paul, all favor.
Thank you.
Fifteen bills.
How fast, it's lengthy. Oh, so you've been very busy, so. I'm busy myself, so. You always sit in behind me, I think. Oh, yes, okay, good. I just met Nikki, so I've been to her place on the library, so she's, she's pretty happy. We break that out with, um, the requirements that she wanted in terms of book numbers, and she sent her, you know, on Thursday, with a couple of different, couple of changes here and there, so I think, I'm sure we'll have to do right now. Okay. I'm assuming I'll meet the lady shortly, um, I'm going to recruit, recruit an options for her, may I have a copy for her space? Which you can take in terms of, all the work, right? All right. All right. So, so we've got a few more adjustments, this last three, and four last. And we think we can. I'm going to start with the side department, uh, talking about, you know, what the requirements were, and, um, leave allow us to go ahead, and rather than sprinting the whole building, we'll just go ahead and allow us to sprint to the second floor. Did you imagine trying to get plate work out of those existence, see if you could get any ground for the night there? So, um, we have plenty of active space to be from, so, a little, so what we've got here, we sent it back in, what we talked about. Now, I think we figured a way here, of being able to get you there across, creating two reference here, but also not with the A D compliant, but there'll be a better function than we are. These two old boys that we have right here, that were, don't really know what they were for. They originally said, I think, that perhaps A D has a patriancy case, but it'll be all, so I think we'll be able to take that space away, so you're actually able to come across and bypass through that road here, to that fourth apartment there. And again, we're hanging on, and we've got two here, and the larger will be five, or six, or whatever. I'd like if you two, um, so, as well. General counsel meeting, um, spec, seating, and merger, actually, this is. Oh, come on. Learning that. We've got, uh, a copy of the, and all of the time, sort of, so that you can probably, it's copy for copy, so we're listening, we can, you know, for. General, we're, yeah, we've got about two, but in, drop them in.
Why do you need that window there?
And we have a, we can, we can change from the green natural lighting, bully the cost of something in the backside, so things like that. And then I think, when you're there, the church here, and the church here, then you're here, and then we added that other restroom area, or if you.
I'm sorry.
Double check on this, maybe, to create a radio restroom. And then this can function exactly as we wish, and we post our paper, we'll, we'll.
And this remains electric.
Which everyone takes, whether it be on the other building, or whatever, this is something that happens more. It's not a functional, it's managed, they said, whichever you so wish. From what we're looking at, we're thinking of. Field to be included, eventually you've got, I'd say, for many, eventually we've already been included. Obviously, this, you know, there, you're beginning to be done, so.
No, we have a good crack.
But we're thinking of coming, you know, very simple, that coming in with, kind of, carpet tiles, we would be popping and popping, just basically, but then. Um, but we, we really try to keep, you know, intact, you know, um, the, the, the drop down. And we're having a rebuild of all of them. Come down this way, that, basically, this whole. That's where all the.
Forty-five lane.
But I think we're tired of those four, this area. Yes, yeah, so, we've tried the last couple of weeks, we've been looking at. We've seen, trying to look at what's, I think, shunned over. So, we put, like we said, for a, um, the, the second floor, by the practice, is, that here, that's thirty-five thousand. And also, and the, 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 the building, and I think we can use a number of existing, that, but we put in some new units. So, we've got a forty-five thousand in, to redo the HVAC, um, so the hallway's part, so we're finding look of coming up, and the trousers floors, and.